All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hi, guys. We also have Julie, Kim, and Colin here from our team. Hello, hello. And as you guys are coming in, let us know where you're coming in from. It's always exciting to hear from you and to see what's going on in your part of the world. We love this community and are really excited that you're taking the time out of your day to spend with us and to spend on your business. And we're going to get to work on some of that here today. Greg had this really cool idea, and I don't know, maybe this is something that came from our community. As a lot of the things that are in our platform have come from our community. Hey, can you do that? Well, Greg did a thing this week, and it's actually going to make it really easy for you guys. If you want to just log into your Get Oiling account and get straight to a thing that you know you want to do. So maybe you need to log in and just send off a text real quick. You can do that in like a quarter of the clicks now, as well as an email and a number of other things. You want to just kind of go straight in and get to the thing. You've got a way to do it now. So we're going to be showing you that today on our call. And also, this is less of an evergreen and more of a right now thing. This time next week, Aroma Sharing Online will be live. This is the second year in a row that Aroma Sharing has been held online. We miss you and we wish we could see you in person, but we are honored to be hosting on the Get Oiling platform and sponsoring as well, Aroma Sharing this year. And so we're going to talk about some of the things that you can expect to see from us. This is a really exciting time of year. If you have not already gotten started with Get Oiling, it's a good time to start coming up during Aroma Sharing. It's a great time to refer your friends, your team. And then, of course, if you are looking for, you know, taking things to the next level, if you want to upgrade or if you want to renew, this is always a really good time of year to do it, and we'll show you why here in just a little bit. Also, we're going to have a couple of website reviews today. I do have, let me see if I can pull this up. Patsy, we missed you last week. We lost connection. If you would still like to have a website review today, please just leave us a comment and let us know. Patsy Mutton Break, I think I saw your name here. Would love to invite you to come out so that we can actually do that review that we weren't able to do last week. Is Macy waving at us, Colin? Oh, my God, it's a baby waving. Hi, Macy. Everybody wave at Macy. Cute. And then we also have, and just let us know that you're here as well. Let me see, Vivian. Vivian, if you're here today, maybe just give us a quick raise of the hand. If you guys aren't here for your review, we do want to make sure that we can make some space for someone who's here who would like to have their work reviewed. So, yeah, Vivian, Patsy, leave us a comment. Let us know. And otherwise, we'll be looking for volunteers after we run through some information to share with you here. So I want to actually kick this over to Greg, who can show us this really cool thing that he did in the system, this great little shortcut that you may have already seen if you've logged into your Good Oiling account in the last day or so.
Absolutely. Let me get started with the screen share here. Cool. Yeah, thanks for teeing that up. Yeah, super excited to announce this here. If you've logged in recently in the last few days, you've probably seen this in your systems, this new little box here. What would you like to do today? I think unofficially they call it like the Quick Start Panel. It's got a bunch of different links and tools to help you get started on some very common actions. This idea sort of came from everybody here because, you know, we get requests like, hey, I find it hard to find this. Or how do I go? Where do I go to get that? And this idea sort of came out of that. It's why, you know, a whole bunch of feedback from a bunch of different people ended up with like this. And then combine that with, you know, we have usage data about which pages are most clicked in the system. And so sort of surface them here, the most clicked areas and features of the system and put them into these nice little categories. I think Ashley was the one who came up with these cool category names. And yeah, ended up with this here too. But in short, you can, you can basically, you know, it's a shortcut panel, more or less, where you can jump right to some very commonly used areas of the system. So like on this engage, it's all about engaging your contacts and your team or whoever, you know, one group of people that you're looking to engage. You can send them an email or texts, jump right to the contact manager. You can go right to Zoom, send a campaign, you know, manage your member area vaults, import contacts, and even find contacts. So I know some of this is duplicate over here. Looking at it on a desktop computer, but on a mobile device, actually, you know, like Find and some of these other links over here are a little harder to get to. So this, this does surface it. A lot of people use the system on their phone, so this will show up right at the top. If you don't like it for some reason, just click it and it goes away. You can hide it and shrink it down if you wanted to get it out of your way. So I just want to mention that because I think that was one of the first points of feedback we got on the Facebook group. But so, yeah, there's these different categories, engage, we've got creates. You can create a whole bunch of things like, whether it's a contact, a webpage, resource bundle, write a blog post. Kind of got all our automations in one place, whether it's the automations feature itself or, you know, campaigns, these sort of things. They're all there. If you're into designing and you want your settings on there, you know, the custom colors and fonts are added in your menu. Those are all kind of under here. So we grouped them into really common, common categories here. But let me show you a couple of these. Most of these are just links to those areas. So like if I, if I click over to, for example, manage member area, that takes me right to this member area page now. Yeah, definitely. Now, there's a couple of different features on here that actually are significantly different in our different workflows than you're used to. So like normally to send out an email or text, you have to go into the contact manager and filter or select and then go to actions and then mail or text. There is a new link on here that will shortcut that for you. So like if you want to send an email or text, you can just click on that. And then it lets you choose the contacts either by tag or by name. And you can either, you know, just choose the tag or tags that you want to send them to. Or specifically, you know, you can enter in the name of a person and that will, they'll show up there. So once you do that, you can then at this point decide, oh, I'm going to write, send him a text. Am I going to send him an email? So I'm going to just click on email. And so what that does then, it pulls it up like apparently that tag had five contacts. And you can just write your message and hit send all from the dashboard without having to leave. So you can really quickly, you know, send out a lot of messages without having to go through and adjust the filters. It is a big time saver when, you know, considering the amount of clicks I want to actually send this. But the same thing works for texting, like if I want to, now I want to send a text to that same group. It remembers the tag from last time. So you don't have to reselect it, send my text, send it, schedule it, save it as a draft, whatever you want to do there right from the dashboard. So that's a nice little time saver there. The other one that is, this one came, the sending campaign feature. This is something that's really, I think, you know, based on kind of what we have, there's a lot of the content creators like, you know, for example, workspace or modern companion that we have on our partner's page, they provide content. And a lot of what they have are monthly newsletters that are created as campaigns. And that previously hasn't been super straightforward. I mean, it takes a few steps to get to send the campaign. And it can be, you know, confusing if you're not sure exactly what the steps are sometimes. Once you get it down, it's fine. It's pretty, you know, makes sense. But now there's a send campaign link here. You just click on that. That makes it super simple. You choose the campaign you want to send, and then you choose what contacts you want to send it to. And then you hit send, and it just adds that campaign to everybody. And then it's just sent. So it's a great way to send those monthly newsletters with just a couple of clicks without having to, you know, go through the other way, which, you know, there's nothing wrong with the other way by any means. You know, you go to your contact manager and you can filter or select. And then you add the bulk actions and then choose a campaign. So it's a little different workflow. Right from the dashboard, it's like super straightforward. You know, we're getting some feedback that people were, you know, because they only did it monthly, they're forgetting how to do it. So like now there's just the one click option, import your campaign from wherever your provider is, edit it, send it, and you're good to go. So yeah, super excited about this. Hopefully this really saves you a lot of time. It's getting a lot of clicks already. So exciting to see. Sorry, my phone just picked up there. But yeah, so and the other feature that's a little bit different is this find contact. It works a lot like this one over here, this box over here, basically the same thing. I don't know if I'm in this contact database, but you can type there and hit Find or hit Enter and it'll pull up. There I am. So yeah, just a quick find for the contact manager. So you can pull somebody up. So, but yeah, other than that, I mean, these are just basically direct links to the different features. Like if I click on automations, it'll click me over there. So yeah, it's just a big panel of time-saving links there. But yeah. Any questions come in and chat? I don't know if I saw any.
There was a question that came through that's not directly related to this, but I think since you're screen sharing, it could be really helpful. Carrie Gale had asked about basically filtering contacts. If you have, if you run several businesses, which a lot of people will run several businesses using their Get Oiling account. So we've got personal trainers and coaches and things like that. For those of you who don't know, who use Get Oiling alongside their oily business or to oil those other businesses and so on. But if you have clients from another business that you maybe don't want to send out all of your oily monthly updates to, then you want to make sure that you're tagging everyone when you're importing them into the system. Now that's something that, that you can learn. If you click the Get Oiling setup progress bar up there at the very top of the screen, the system setup is going to teach you, there's going to be a video there that'll show you how to import or add your contacts. Now, when you do that, you want to give them a tag. So if it's massage, then these are massage clients, right? Or if these are counseling or whatever, then you're going to want to label them. But then when you go over here to manage in your contacts menu, what you want to do when it's time to send out something to one business or another is you go to filters. And this is something that you do actually need to perform these steps. This is not a shortcut thing, right? That's a really quick, let me find these people and send a thing. If you want to send something to some people, but not others, you need to make sure that those people are tagged. And so what you would do is, is you would enter the tag for maybe your young living people, excuse me, and do the exclude for the people who aren't, or you could simply just do an exclude tag, right? Like if people, if there's a bunch of people in here who are young living and you want everybody who's young living to get their PV promo that you're sending out, but you don't want the people who are in here as your chiropractic or coaching or whatever clients, then you would use the exclude only, right? If everybody else is young living otherwise. So that's, that's what you would do. You would either add or exclude one or the other, both. Okay. This next one, Martha, we can take a look at that, like actually physically look at that here in just a few minutes, if you can bear with us. We're going to get through some announcements and then happy to, to take a look there. And also I see that we have someone who's new to the community here in the chat, Rachel. If you have a specific goal in mind, if you want to, there's something in particular you want to learn how to do today, would be really happy to show you and, you know, help you kind of get things started off, right? So leave us a comment if you are, you know, at a place where you feel like you need to be shown how to do something or if you've got questions. And Carrie, I think this is a follow-up question. When people opt out of getting emails, is there something we need to do? Or once they opt out, they just don't get them anymore. When they opt out, they're opted out. They're still in your contact manager because they're still on your list. They just won't get the emails that you send out as broadcasts. If you were to send out an individual email to them, you can still send an individual email to them, just not those marketing broadcasts. The automated stuff won't go out. Okay. So, so yeah, I guess there's, I don't see any questions about this new feature, which is great because it's supposed to be really like easy to understand and use. So that's awesome. Cool. So what I would do real quick is just take a brief aside and talk about Aroma Sharing. Amanda's been hard at work at this for some time now, creating something super awesome that you guys are going to be seeing very soon. But, but one of the things that we've also been working with behind the scenes is, is figuring out how we can help you guys get more out of working with us and to grow your business more efficiently and in a way that you just really love, right? We want you to have the time freedom that comes with a residual income business. And we want you to really be able to make the most of what's here for you. So we have switched things up a little bit. We've got some tried and true. If you guys have been around for a while, maybe come to Aroma Sharing in person and hugged us. I miss hugging you guys. We've got some things that we've always had, but we've got some really cool new stuff too. So I am going to share some slides with you guys, and I've never done this with Canva before. So fingers crossed that this all works okay. And then, then we're going to roll up our sleeves and get to work with Martha and maybe with Rachel or whoever else is here looking for help today. So let me go ahead and share my screen here, and I think that this will allow me to do what I need to do. Okay, can you confirm? And let me make that go away here. Okay. Ooh, I get a little dot. Can you see my screen? Okay.
I can. I see the little dot too. It's kind of fun.
Yeah, that's kind of neat, right? All right. So this is the best time of year, you guys, to get started with Get Oiling if you have not already to upgrade or renew with your Good Oiling membership, to refer your team members to Get Oiling, which we haven't done that yet, but we're going to show you how you can refer your team. And there's something in it for you when you do, not just helping them to grow, but you actually get, you get part of your next month free, which is pretty cool. And then, of course, to do your oily shopping. For those of you who don't know about Aroma Sharing, or if you're brand new to Young Living, Aroma Sharing has been going on for, like, this is the 12th year, right? I'm pretty sure that was the answer in the interview I did with Sandy and Kathleen. But this is an incredible, incredible gathering of people, artisans and business tools. Some of our, you know, some of our best friends are there, like Grow Workspace. We've got people who have resources for your business, just resources for oiling your life. A lot of really great stuff there. You know, share some love for Aroma Sharing in the comments. If you guys have been, we definitely appreciate all the work that goes into it. It's a really great experience. And it will be online again for the second time this year. And the doors will open June 9th through the 16th. So you can go to aromasharingonline.com and actually get on the list for notifications. They're going to be sending out emails. They've got a Facebook group. We've been posting in there, sharing some of these sneak peeks. If you guys are in there, you might see some things that look familiar because we're going to cover those here today as well. But there's some things you might not have known about that you'll find out about soon. So here's what you're going to find when you come and find us at our booth, our virtual booth at Aroma Sharing. First, and this is a tried and true, we do this every year. It's so much fun. We are going to make growing your business a little sweeter by giving away a bottle of Young Living Rose Oil. So this is something that you can get. You have to come to our booth to be able to, to sign up, to win this. And there are multiple ways that you can enter to win. It's always so fun to be able to, you know, hear who wins it and, and for them to get so excited about winning a full bottle of oil, of rose oil. Because who doesn't want that, right? So this is happening again. Now, we're going to also help you get started right. And guys, this is brand new. We're going to help you get started right by using, for you using Get Oiling, the way that leaders do. So I've been seeking out the leaders that I work with directly, leaders that use our system to kind of figure out what the best way is for someone who's just getting started or who's moving into leading and growing a team, or who wants to get more done in less time and just get the most out of our system like the leaders that use us do. And they've put together some free stuff for you guys that we're giving away to everyone who gets started and takes advantage of this opportunity during Aroma Sharing. So first, Jessica Domann, if you guys tune into the Weekly Work Session, we've had her on a few times this year. She's recently released a really cool course that we worked on together, sharing how she spends just three hours a week on her Young Living Business on social and still signs up one to two new customers every single week. The kicker here, you guys, like the secret sauce, she uses Get Oiling, right? Everything was all over the place and she spent a ton of time on all kinds of stuff. And she was able to shave that time down to just three hours a week. And she and I did a training together that you're going to get access to along with her follow-up plans. Now, that's a thing that plugs into your Get Oiling system. So you can literally use your Get Oiling system just like she does, get the training and the scripts that go with it. And this is included for people who sign up during Aroma Sharing. So this is a really, really exciting thing that Jess has made available. And you get to learn how to use the system like she does. And this is for prospecting specifically. So it's going all the way through everything that she says, how long she waits between following up and when her last conversation was, what she does in the Get Oiling system each time she performs an action, moving someone from a curious person who maybe saw a post or a comment that she made all the way through to getting them started with Young Living as a new customer. Pretty cool, right? That's a free thing that's being given away. Now, these two beauties, I don't know, if you guys know, Simple Grace Collective, Janelle and Sarah love these two. Now, these two cross-team goals work together and create resources. They're actually content partners for Get Oiling, and you can learn more about them on our partner's page. They have recently been running a live free Team YL challenge to get people excited about all of the changes that are coming and what it means for your business. And they've been hosting opportunity calls. And guys, they're really good. So if you don't feel really comfortable about, you know, sharing the business opportunity side of Young Living with your team or with your prospects, they are going to give you, when you sign up for Get Oiling during Aroma Sharing, they're going to give you an opportunity page with a video they made. You get access to, you can use it to grow your business. That's something that's going to be included for people who get started with us during Aroma Sharing. And all of the details about this, you guys are going to be at our booth. You got to come to the booth to find out. Now, finally, Jackie McLaughlin is one of my favorite people in the whole wide world. She has been with Young Living for just under 20 years. She's a platinum. And this woman knows a thing or two about running a business right. Now, Jackie uses four key systems to run her business. And similar to the stories that you hear from other people who spent way too much time on things that maybe, maybe they didn't even need to be doing. Previously, before they had Get Oiling, Jackie transformed her business and was able to duplicate that success with her team. And it revolves around four key systems. These are, you know, basically checklists and actions to perform inside the Get Oiling system to run all of the most important aspects of your business. And this is something that is going to be a four-part training series that, again, is going to be free for folks to get started. You can learn more about this at our booth. It's something that we're going to be working on together, and I'm really, really excited and grateful that Jackie has made this offer to help you guys learn how to work like she does and to get those kind of results. So that is a new thing, these three, this was four group of leaders here are offering up how they use Get Oiling and giving you the tools that they use themselves to help you get started right and use the system successfully. Now, speaking of systems, and some of y'all may be familiar with this, leave us a comment in the chat if you know what we're talking about. You gotta get your groups off of Facebook, right? And we have created the system for you to do it. And that is with this move your groups off of Facebook course. Now, if you don't have a Facebook group and you just want to use the Get Oiling vaults to create member education systems, and every single one of the leaders that I just spoke to you about, they do this. They have this program. They've set up their own, and they have amazing systems that they use to educate their teams. This is a course that is going to be included here. I've run this live before, and I've been astonished at the results that our community has been seeing with creating these educational resources. Again, leave this comment. Let everybody know how much you love your member area because I know y'all have been putting so much great work into them. All right. Now we're going to talk about getting more done and getting the word out, what you can get when you get started with us during Aroma Sharing. You can get free two-way texting, and that's for up to a year. You can learn more about those details at our booth. We'll also be giving away marketing credits, up to 1,000 extra marketing credits per month for life. Guys, marketing credits are the currency that runs your system when you send a text, when you send a campaign, when you send an email, when you send a text with pictures or without pictures. These involve the use of marketing credits. So as your team grows and as you want to send out more classes via text that you bring in from Grow Workspace or from Modern Companion or YL Customer Delight, you are going to be using that marketing credits. We're giving you more so you can do more and share more and save more while you're doing it. Now let's talk about elevating you. We are giving away, and this is something that is only given away once or twice a year ever, and we've always got people asking when we're going to do it again. This is a live coaching intensive with me. This is the Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive, and we'll be running this live again. This is not just about creating a visual brand. This is about building your iconic personal brand. That includes what you show up to talk about, what you say, how you show up visually, of course, but then how you show up repetitively, right? What the strategy is for you to get your message out there so that when people hear certain words or see certain things, they know it's you and your brand works the way that powerful brands are designed to. Now, there's a lot of changes coming up with Young Living, and I think a lot of us are kind of looking around for what on earth we can do to, you know, to take advantage of what's coming up or to prepare ourselves because now there's not going to be kits anymore. It's bundles. And maybe I need this app or this thing or that thing. And you guys, there's only one reason why people sign up in the first place, and it's because they have a relationship with you. You listen to them. They understood you to be the person that was right to work with, and they said yes. They only, only decide that the bundles and the kits and the whatevers, right? The whichever diffuser or add-on or whatever they might get, they only say yes to those things after they say yes to you. So the thing to focus on right now is getting your brand right. So we're going to help you do that with the Become an Icon Personal Branding Intensive. Now, further along those lines, we are giving away free custom website domains. So you can brand yourself, get found, and make sharing so much easier. Now, it's not getoiling.com/whatever name you gave, forward slash whatever, it's yourname.com, right? You can get that when you sign up during Aroma Sharing. And we also have on offer, and again, these are all going to depend on which plan you sign up for. You know, if you're renewing and so on, you're going to learn more about that at the booth. So if you've got the questions, which one of things do I get and how do I get each one? You're going to find out when you join us at the booths, just make sure that you come and find us at Aroma Sharing. We are giving away a one-on-one tech and marketing consult at certain plan levels. And that does involve a call with the team where you can get your own strategy for your site, for your brand, for your tech, so that everything is set up to work the way you want it to. And guys, there's actually more to come. That's not all. There is more that we are working on right now with the content partners. And there will be more to share and announce really exciting stuff that's coming up. So just make sure you mark your calendars and make your life easier. Go over to aromasharingonline.com, sign up to get the notifications, and then run over to come see us once this goes live so that you can find out how to take advantage of what we've got on offer during Aroma Sharing. All right. That was that. I hope you loved it. And let's, let's talk about getting some work done, you guys. I know I have here, and I didn't see Vivian in the, in the attendees list. But Vivian, if you're here, if you could raise your hand, I would love, I would love to bring you out to chat, and I don't know that you're here. Also, last week, Patsy, we didn't get to chat. If you would like to talk about your website, feel free to raise your hand as well, and I'll bring you out to talk. But let me go back and find our Q and A, and we can get to that question that Martha had. Okay, so here we go. All right. So at the top page of, on the top of my page, there's a way, is there a way to take Learn More off of my cover photo? Also, can I make my cover photo smaller so that you can see the about me on the same page and not have to scroll down to see it? It sounds like we're talking about a built-in theme. That's all right? I see now it's from our smart guys. Okay, cool.
I can demo what I said. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, share my screen here. Okay, back over here. So if you want to get rid of that Learn More button and actually, see if I can show you what that is here. Let's see here, pull up one of the built-in themes. I won't pull up your exact website, but okay, there we, okay. So here's the, one of the built-in themes. What we're referring to is this Learn More button. Sometimes depending on the photo that you have, it doesn't make sense, whatever. So over and get oiling, go down to customize my site. And there will be a setting down here, a way to show the Learn More button on the built-in themes. You can click that and then scroll down and save, and then it'll go away. So it's pretty simple. The, as far as the cover photo, that, you know, it always stretches to fill the space. So you'll want to play with that a little bit, like try different image sizes, different proportions. Sometimes maybe add some padding around there. If you want a little more, I guess, what do you want to say, predictability about it? You can create your own custom website, and then you can create some nice gorgeous themes or, you know, a homepage for yourself and still use these themes. You can link those off of the menu, for example, instead of having that as your homepage. So we do have some tutorials for that. There is also on the built-in themes, you do have your ability to put your photo down here with the with the, where's that at? The scroll the way back up here. The my story and photo link over here, it allows you to put your photo and story in here. So it's another way of doing it and consider, you know, maybe a different artistic background image here. Then it doesn't really matter how it's cropped, because it can be kind of challenging given that it's stretched. But yeah, so hopefully that helps. If you have any other questions, certainly reach out to support at getoiling.com. They can advise you about your specific site and the, you know, the photo that you're trying to use. And maybe even, you know, crop it or help you size it or something to make it look better if that's the one you want to use. So awesome.
All right, cool. Um, let's see. So there's that. Kathy asked, would Jess's materials be available if we renew during Aroma Sharing as well as new users? So just come over to the booth. We're going to have a way for you to take advantage of what we're offering. There is a way. So just make sure that you come to the booth between the ninth and the 16th. And, and we'll help you get that done. And just FYI, this is if you already have Modern Social Mama, and I believe it's a part of, she's, we're giving away something that she gives to her coaching group. And that's, it's a training that we did together for that. That's literally a peek over her shoulder at how she uses Get Oiling from, from the prospecting process on social all the way through to signing someone up, which is really cool. All right. So Martha got that figured out. Excellent. Okay. One more question. How can I edit the tabs at the top right of the screen?
Let me share my screen again. Yeah, that is doable by editing. So I think you're referring to this over here, the menus. That could be found in a couple of different places. So you can use this nifty new little dashboard widget here. This, what would you like to do today panel? Under Design, there is the Edit Website Menu here. Let's click on that. And then you can, here's your menu headers and the items that are under them. You can add a top level menu header, which would be like the equivalent of one of these Learn Opportunity Contact Me. Or you see like the Learn has a pulldown menu. That is something you can do by adding a menu item to an existing menu. So you choose what you want to put on here, whether it's a page or you know, links to very, you know, the built-in themes. You can choose built-in themes and, you know, which theme that you want to use. So there's a and give it a label and then choose what menu header it appears under. So you can totally design whatever menu you want to there. And there's a, there is a nice little tutorial, I believe, in the Help section. So if you search for menu, there is a custom menu that shows you, walks you through how to do all that and explains each of these items as well as, I believe, there's a short little video here. If you want to set a custom homepage on your site, you can do that as well for the menu. Also, I wanted to show that I've got the bottle of rose oil right here, if I can get this thing in front of the camera. So it's right there. It's ready to go. It's physically present. So we're just excited to send it off to whoever the lucky winner might be.
Yes. Oh, and oh, you know what we didn't do? Please go back to sharing, Greg. We didn't show them. Okay, guys, you need to know. Y'all need to know how to share Get Oiling with your teams and what happens when you do. So this is a really great time. So just FYI, again, all the details, is it annual? Is it monthly? Which is the thing? What is the thing? Whatever? How do I enter? All that's going to be at the booth, right? So just make sure you come to the booth and you'll get all of those details there. Don't worry, you're going to get them all. And but just FYI, one of the ways during Aroma Sharing that you're going to be able to, let's just say, for instance, to increase your likelihood of winning rose oil or one of the other things that we will be giving away. And that last thing, that that's not all, that's going to be a giveaway. And it's with one of our content partners and it's just ridiculously good. So you're going to increase your chances of winning the more you refer. So you can refer, Greg's showing you right here, this button, Share My Site. And then grab your referral links right here.
Click on the referral link. It'll pop up a little window and it'll even say your name there. And then you just copy this link and share it with whoever you want to sign up.
Yes. And when, when you do, you split a free month with the person that you are giving your link to. So if someone is on your team and maybe they're just getting started, or maybe they've been using your Leg Builder link for months and you're like, hey, it's time to take this business seriously. You give them that link and they're going to get half off of what you Greg, how does it work? Half off of a month and then they are, they get half off of a month, but it's still a dollar for their first month. They basically get a dollar for 45 days, right?
Yeah, it splits the second, it's 50% off the second month. So yeah, if so, you know, whatever plan they're on. It's based on the plan that the other person signs up for. So whether it's basic or premium, you just, you know, divide that at half, and that's essentially what your account credit would be, as well as they get the second, 50% off their second month. So yeah, it's an extra free month essentially split it based on the plan that they have. So it's a great way to get going.
Yeah, we, we have some leaders that, that go for months sometimes with, with, with a free Get Oiling account for this reason. So so, so yeah, this is, this is something that y'all can do as well. Just make sure you're using that referral link there. All right. I've got, ooh, I see a volunteer. Sean, you got to it before I had the chance to ask for volunteers. So Sean, Constance, if you could please put your link in the chat. And we do have time for two. So if there is one other person who would like to have your website reviewed, or even if you haven't gotten your website up yet, and you just want to talk and you want to, you know, help figure things out, where do I point and click? This is a good time for that. So if it is you, then say that's me in the comments and we will get you going. All right, Sean, I'm going to, I'm going to assume that's getoiling.com forward slash, and I'm going to go type that in and make sure I'm right before I share my screen. Also, that's a really cute name. Okay.
It's the end Q and A with a website too. Whatever. We get there.
Yeah. All right. So, okay, we've got, we've got a second one too. Christy, I'm going to go ahead and add you to my tabs up here. And then I'm going to bring Sean out to chat and then I'll bring you out next. Exciting stuff. I like that picture of you, Christy. That's awesome. All right, Sean, let me find you. Hello, come on out and talk with us, please. And thanks for, um, thanks for volunteering, Sean.
No problem. I'm glad to do it. I feel privileged to be here.
Well, we're happy to have you here with us. So tell me a little bit about what you're looking for in terms of feedback.
Oh, your feedback is amazing. Whatever catches your eye.
Hey. Well, tell me, uh, tell me what you got going on here. Are you, what are you giving away here?
So I am giving away a Grow Workspace. Uh, what do we call that? Printable. And it's, it's Father's Day ideas for gifts.
Okay, so the, the very first thing I would say is to get a lot more clear in what that is right here. And if it is a guide, I would also consider taking a picture of it and popping it in right here.
Oh, that's a great idea. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go over to Canva and make yourself a little thing. I think I did this.
Canva.
Yes, I think it was, I don't think it was in this Grow Works, this account, but very recently, and I believe it was on a Grow Workspace, one of their Tuesday calls. I think I actually demoed that. So if you're a Grow Workspace Premium, that's going to be in their recordings.
Yeah.
So yeah, they've got images for the stuff that they give away. So by all means, either put that image here or make a Canva image, a square image will fit really well here. So just do like the 500 by 500 or just a square thing in Canva. Pop that in and then maybe put some words over it or something, right? So great gift, you know, guide for Father's Day or something like that. We just, we need to be really clear here. Amazing, amazing natural men's gift guide plus recipes. That could mean a lot of stuff, right? So we want them to know that this is for them. This is for the man in their life. Who is that man? Or who is the person that you're talking to who's shopping for that man? Just make sure that you're really clear on that. That'll make this effective. So once we've got that out of the way. Oh, you've got a, um, this is from Janelle and Sarah, isn't it?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, I love it. Okay, so what does it say? Sean's Oilies testimonies. Okay. Then you've got their simple start. Oh, oh. Do you see what we got here? Okay, so, um, so when we're clicking on this right here, we don't have that connected correctly. Let me stop my share real quick so we can make sure that I'm in your account. Because I'm not right now. All right. So I'm going to log in here and let me show you real quick. I think we're good. Okay, so right here, this link, when we click it, it's actually going to a landing page.
That's where.
That it does be right. So let's go look at this real quick. This, I assume this is, is this called home?
Good question. It was actually a hall of funnel that came with together with.
This is what I'm looking for. Okay, so what we have right here, this is, you have an internal link here. Right? So where you see, anywhere you see app, that is the Get Oiling app. So this should be a getoiling.com forward slash your, your Get Oiling link, which is, you know, this, this one, oops. This thing right here. So let me show you how to find this so that we can connect this correctly. So in your landing pages, I'm assuming it's going to be the simple start, right?
Yes.
Okay, so when you hit View, this is the link we want. Do you see how this didn't have the app in it?
Yes.
So that's what needs to be linked right?
Good catch. I appreciate this.
Clicking everything will always.
Push all the buttons.
Yes. Get out of my head. Yes, push all the buttons. Awesome. Okay. One other thing that I would recommend doing here. Do you see how we're a little uneven right?
Oh, I did not. Okay.
Yeah. So you can actually see if you click an image, go to the ruler here. These are both, see, this one is 300 and then auto. Let's see if these are actually the same size. There we go. That's, I think that's right. How about we go update? I'm going to make them both 400. Okay, that's, yeah, I guess they're the same. Okay. And then I want to, one other thing. You've got a lot more space down here than you do up here. You see that?
Okay, yes.
That is section padding. And that's if you click this little half circle here.
Okay.
You can go to top padding and you can watch the screen right here.
Oh, that's awesome.
Love it, don't you? Okay, so, so there's that. And you could even hit enter and just kind of take it down a little bit. And
What do you think about the fonts?
I think that this is great. I like that you've got this, this fancy font here is minimal. You just don't want a page full of this kind of
Right, headache.
Text. Yep. So no, this is good. This is good. The, this feels a little small for a 16-point font. Greg, do you feel like that's right? Any other designing folks like that? It feels like it's a little smaller. Is it just that I'm on a
Also wondering if, because I was looking at her actual website. It doesn't have that scripty font on there. So I'm wondering if this wasn't the font that was used originally on, you know, wherever you claim this from, and it isn't coming through. So it might be a font that needs installing. I guess I don't know what plan level you're on, but that's just a, that's something I noticed there too. Some fonts are super small. We've noticed that like with scripty, script fonts in particular, they tend to use a lot more numbers to get bigger.
So here, let's, um, let's put it in. Let's put it in one that's actually in the system. And then see that show up here. Did I save it? I didn't save it. Silly me. Okay, let's try that again. No, that's not, why isn't that? Hmm. Yes, extra sticky.
I brought you extra sticky.
So that's, that's, um, it's a code thing. And sometimes, yeah, sometimes code does, uh, Colin, that's a really good question. It's got a question from Colin in Slack. It might be cash. I have no idea. This is where we get over Ashley's head.
It's okay. We can keep going. I can play with that.
Okay.
All right. That's not the one though. This is the old.
I, oh. Is, that's why I'm not seeing changes. Okay. Is it this template too?
Try that.
Copy?
It's the copy. Let's go to copy.
Let's go. Oh, yeah, it is. Okay.
Okay.
Look at us. Okay, let's try that. See, there we go. So this one is, uh huh. So if we wanted to make that our tangerine script.
Wow, I love that.
Well, good. It's in your system. You don't have to do anything at all.
I love that even more.
Already done. All right. So I'm going to make this, I'm going to give this just a little bit more space this out. That's a little big. I'm going to go to one and a half. There we go. Perfect. These are basically level.
They look, maybe it's an optical delusion.
It might be, but let's just make them both the same size.
Yeah.
I think they are. Okay.
I really felt like I had to, um, hire a photographer, but I went through my own photos and I just want to encourage others that sometimes we do have the photos to plug in. If we look a little bit harder, maybe, or
Yeah.
Open up our minds.
An open mind.
Yeah.
I love it. This is good. I love it. I love it. I love it. So let's see, what else were we? Oh, that's right. Because the, we didn't, we were editing the wrong page. So you, you know what to do now, because you saw me do it.
Okay. So do you think that my picture with the Pinterest scan is ill-matched here with these? Whoa, one picture's bigger than the other two, I see.
Yeah. So, and they're, and they're not the same in terms of their edges either. Do you see that? You see?
Oh, my goodness. No, I did not.
So you know, the easiest way to do this, and I do recommend, like, I, I would say, put this in a new section. So put a section down here that's like, visit my collection of resources and maybe have some copy there that's talking about what those resources are. And then, you know, have your, you know, have three things here that are similar. And so basically, and I know that they give you a template for this. Just make sure that when you are downloading them, just make sure they're all in the same file. The way I do this as a shortcut is just to go to, go to logo here. And depending on if you have Canva Pro or not, you know, if you wanted to do something that, you know, use a frame that was round, for instance, or something like that, you would be downloading with a transparent background. But then I just duplicate the same thing so that they're all the same. Right? So once you get one done, the way that you like it, just do the other two so that the font's the same, the colors, everything is the same. And then they all download together so that when you upload them, they're going to be really, really similar.
I was thinking about doing another giveaway. So doing another like landing page maybe there to take them to a class or something. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, you actually have, I mean, you've got like a gift guide that you're offering right now or like a right, the, the thing for, for, for men from a workspace. That's, that's something that you could put over here. Let me show you an example of something like this that one of my clients just put up on her site recently. She has Oh, wow. You know, these are all basically the same, right? It's the same kind of font. Similar types of images in the background, but they all go off to different things. And you could always default to just having a subscribe for update image.
Oh.
And, and that's more evergreen than having to go in and swap something out and make something new all the time, right?
Hmm, I like that. That's a good idea.
Subscribe for update. And finally, what I would say down here is if you, if you have Canva Pro, definitely export these images as transparent background, because you can see, actually, kind of on top. But the, the cheat code for that is just to, if you don't have Canva Pro, is to make the image background in Canva the same color as the section background on your site. So the same color you would make.
That's a good cheat. Oh, that's awesome. Can you check my blog? You showed me how to, it's under, it's at the top right. How to do about me and add all that extra stuff.
Okay, so this is good. One thing, when you go to blog, really, really recommend that you use the blog, the excerpt feature. So what that means is, and I'll just go into one of your recent blog posts, is we're going to, there we go, we have a featured image, which is great, but then what we do is we're going to copy maybe the first paragraph there. And under advanced options, we're going to show an excerpt. I'm gonna paste that in there.
Okay, I wasn't sure how to do that. Okay.
And then when we go and we look at your blog again, it looks like this.
Oh, I'd rather click on that. Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. So do that for all of them. And it's definitely gonna be nicer the more of the sort of featured images you could use. And just, you know, another, another sort of little cheat code for you, if you've got your branding in place, you come over to, to your Canva, and I'm pretty sure if you do the custom size here, I think it's 1200 by 630, or 600, or something like that. Greg, correct me. Colin, somebody, if that's right. Or actually, maybe it's, it might actually be on the page.
We all need a Greg and Colin in our head.
Yes, it is. Okay, yes, yes, we do. 1200 by 630, see right there. So that's the dimension. And so what you can do is, you know, heck, use one of their, you know, use one of the things that they have, swap this out with your branding, make this the title of your blog post. Change this image out for a different one. And so now you can have a, a really sort of visually congruent blog.
Yeah.
People are scrolling through.
Excellent idea. I look so professional at that point. I love it.
So Jackie does this, and hers looks really nice. So she's got a kind of format that she follows on all of hers.
And she stays the same color. Okay.
Yep, she keeps her, keeps her, her brand colors on point. Yes.
Jackie Loughlin, you said?
McLaughlin. Yeah, that's actually, she's the platinum leader that's giving away some, some of her tools for, for aroma sharing. Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I would do with the blog.
I appreciate that so much. Thanks.
You're making great progress.
It is a work in progress.
It is.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, Christie, let me find you here. If you could raise your hand, that would be excellent if you're ready to come out. There you are. Hello. Oh. Just really faintly.
Let me, I might be on.
Oh, that's better. That's, that's much better.
Okay, well, I'm probably on my, my, what am I trying to say? Bluetooth.
Well, we can hear you now, so that's good. Hi.
Okay. Hi, hi. Do I need to turn on my screen or what?
Good, you're good. It's, that's, that's totally up to your preference. I was gonna screen share your, your site. Tell me a little bit about what you're looking for in terms of, of feedback here.
Well, I'd just like your opinion on the colors of everything. And I used to have it set up, my, see, I used to have it go directly to a custom homepage. And I recently took that off because I don't always want my people to go to my page for just what that custom homepage is set up for.
Okay, yeah.
It's, I sent you that link as well. It's, because it's for homeschooling, and I would love your opinion on the homepage too. But I guess I'm still trying to figure out my niche, but it's generally speaking, homeschooling, faith, and then holistic wellness. So those three things combined. And I guess, just give me your, your thoughts on what you see as far as do things flow together well, you know, that kind of thing. I don't.
Okay, so this is, this is the homepage. Ooh.
Okay, so that's my, yeah.
Okay, got you. You just haven't, you have set up right now, though, this as your homepage, which, I mean, I think that this is a great place to keep things, like if you're mainly just out there having conversations about young living, and you're wanting to point people over to a resource, this is the perfect way to have things set up, right? The, the other, the other alternative, right? Like if you want to take things a step further, and you want this to be the main conversation that you're leading. And then, you know, behind the scenes, after people sign up for your list, or you have conversations with them, then you're moving them toward oils, toward product. Then, you know, then of course, you, you take the, make a leg builder link that, you know, points to this page, and then link to it from here, which you could certainly do, you know, just out of the gate.
How do I, you mean, link it? Do you mean send the leg builder link to people who individually ask for it, or do you mean have it automatically go there?
So, so what you can do, let's see, which theme is this? This is the healthy home theme. So what, what you would do is over here in your leg builder links.
Oh, I have created a bunch of those.
Yeah, you have. So here's healthy homes. So if we hit view here, we could actually just copy that link. What you could do is you could put this link in your menu, or you could put it somewhere on the site here. That works perfectly fine as well. Another, actually, I can, I can show you a great example of someone who's actively building Young Living right now, who is still working on sort of what her primary offering, offering is going to be in her personal brand, and that is our networker extraordinaire Colette. And so, you know, this is just, you know, she's got her little one-minute miracle, Richard Bris, Bliss, Brooks, say that 10 times fast. Right? She's got the story here on the page. And then when you, you know, you can go off and book a call with her, or really importantly, when she's networking with people, hey, are you here to learn more about oils? She's got a page that has a quick sizzle video, and then she offers a grow workspace essential oil 101 class. You could just as easily have a, hey, are you here to learn about oils on this page? And have it link you, here, let me paste that in here, that healthy homes. And all of your leg builder links are just gonna be your website URL forward slash for F O R, and then whatever the word is that you gave for that specific link. Okay, so you probably have one that you've already made for pets.
Yeah. I think so.
I think you do. Yep. There it is.
True, and set them all up, because I heard y'all talk about it on another class. And, and I liked the idea. But see, I think my biggest challenge is cohesively lining the, it's like so much backend setup, in my opinion, that I, I have a hard time getting it all running smoothly. You know what I mean? I just, I'd need to hire somebody to do it, I guess. I don't know. It's just hard, but.
Well, I think the, the easiest and simplest thing to do is, is to go with the simplest route, right? So are you, when you're on social or you're out in the community, when you're talking with new people, what are the conversations that you're having with them?
Um, a lot of all-natural choices, like, you know, this is bothering me, Christie, what would you suggest? So I do have a lot of young living products I suggest to people. But, you know, a lot of those people are in my circle, my sphere of influence, which is baseball groups and, you know, homeschoolers and church people.
That's awesome. So.
And hormone.
What?
What'd you say? We, we talk a lot about hormones, and I have a landing for hormones too.
Perfect. So what you can do is, there's actually a number of different things you can do, or this is concerned. The best thing you can always do is not think that one thing is gonna be the solution for everyone, because we know that that's not true, right? So you're having these conversations, and if we're doing this correctly, you are hearing clues in those conversations as to what the best thing would be to share with them. So that means you can just simply go and grab one of those leg builder links that you've already created, use that if you want. And this is actually a really cool thing. I learned this from Janelle of Simple Grace Collective. She figured out this hack, and I thought it was the most brilliant thing ever. Make a landing page that offers, like that thing that you were talking about, that you've got a lead magnet for hormones. You know, for those of you who aren't creating your own lead magnets, by all means, use content that our content creators create. Those are perfectly great to use. But what you can do here is create a landing page. And then the, the page that it connects to is going to be the, the, one of, one of these guys. One of, one of your leg builder links, right? Where they can, they can opt in, the email campaign that you attach to it can send them that guide. But then this is the page that they would redirect to, right?
Right.
So, you know, if most of your conversations are oily right now, don't worry about having to figure out a custom homepage yet. Use the system to manage your contacts, to move people through, share the stuff that is super shareable in here and ready to go, and already beautiful, like all of this. Just start, just use, use that. Just do it that way. And then as you start to feel more confident in using the different pieces of it, then, yeah, then, then build the page and decide what you want to put on it, right? So if you're, you know, again, I'll point Colette out here. Because, you know, what Colette's doing is she's going to, she's going to networking meetings. And I mean, she is, she's talking to tons of people on a weekly basis. She's got appointments all the time, meeting via Zoom, and she's always signing up new people. Everything is super oily focused. Because she's showing up to B and I's and stuff, and she's the lady with the oil. So she doesn't really, like, there's not really, it doesn't make sense to put a whole lot in front of that. She does have goals, and there are things that we're working on that, that she'll be offering in the future. But for now, people can learn from her by going to that page that, that I've already shown you, right, this one. People can sign up for a live training, or, or, you know, if they go to an event, maybe they could also go to remember area, and then they can book an appointment to work with her. Like, I would just keep it simple with your homepage, if you want to create a custom homepage, but don't feel like you have to if the conversations you're already having can be supported by things that already exist in the system.
I actually reached out to Colette from, I think you did an interview with her, and, and I asked her if I could get my hands on that video, you know, that video you just pointed to about essential oils and. She, she wrote me back, but I think you have to, I don't know, I never really got an answer. And then, of course, it's out of sight, out of mind, and I never followed up with it. But her video's awesome, and I would like to use that, you know, on my page. But.
That is, that's Richard, see if I can say it this time, Richard Brook. It's his, it's one of his videos. When you work with him, there's a number of different videos that, that he makes available to you.
Okay, okay, that's cool. I have two more questions.
Um, okay.
Okay, first I want to ask you, well, I want you to know, I'm in Modern Social Mama, totally following Jessica, and I love her, and she's just fantastic. And I'm doing her June challenge and everything. So my IG is really, really ramped up thanks to her. But, but I, I don't know if this is just, you know, I know we're all waiting for this change in Young Living to swap over to the new system and, but, you know, I've been in Young Living for four years, and still to this day, the signup process is such a headache for people. In fact, I lost an enrollment last month because she couldn't figure it out. And I don't know how more to simplify. I'm like, just use my number, and then I make custom links, and I try to send it to them, and they still can't figure it out.
You know what you gotta do? I think you know the answer to this.
Walk them through it?
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I don't know if Jackie is here right now, and, and Jackie, go ahead, raise your hands and stomp your feet if you want to. This is actually, this is something that Jackie swears by, you know, thus Jackie's been in this company for 20 years, almost, and, and is, is a platinum leader. And I, I say this myself as well, because you can't, I mean, I, I love our technology, but code and tech and, you know, plug and power, basically not people, things, they're not infallible. So when you've got someone ready, you want to give them the best experience possible, and you want to give them the most duplicable experience possible. So be with them in person, or be with them on the phone, or be with them on Zoom, or, and Jackie does this a lot too. You sign them up, and you be on the phone or on Zoom with them, and have them give you the information so that you input it, and they don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, yeah, I could have done that, I suppose. But she reached out to me at like midnight, and I was like, till the next day, and it was June 1st, you know, and it was.
I hear you.
But, you know.
But I mean, even, even once all of the changes are in place, it's gonna happen again. I mean, it's, it's technology, right? It's, it's imperfect. And it's, you know, it'll happen again on the YL site, you know, there'll be a day that's something, you know, some burp happens, and, you know, the server doesn't show the page right on your site, or what, like, there's always a possibility for that kind of thing. And I think that the most important thing that we can do, especially when we're getting someone signed up and getting them started, is to be with them when, when, when we do that. And I know that there are a lot of differing opinions on that. I just, that's, that's where I stand on that side of the divide, and I know that's where Jackie stands too. We just, we, we sat together and talked about this for 20 minutes yesterday.
Well, and sometimes you just have to know the person and, and think, okay, well, that's what they need, and let it be, let it be what it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. I did also, did you see my link page? I sent you that too.
Oh, where, where did you send this? You're saying you sent it to me. Is it in the chat or something?
Send the chat, yeah.
Okay, okay, let me find it. Yes, you made it like an Instagram link page. Oh, you used our template. Hang on, let me show everybody. Good job.
I just wonder, is it crazy?
So it's gonna look like this on the phone. Balance your hormones. Keep in your homeschool. No, great. I would hit enter right here.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this, oh, this, um, this button looks different.
I just copied and picked, yeah. Yeah, I copied it. One above this has.
I think the, here, let me, let me come over here.
I couldn't get the font up at the bottom. It's weird. I was trying to.
I did notice that image that you're using there, just to, to come back here. You see how these are all sort of clean backgrounds, right? This one doesn't appear to have been saved with a transparent background. This discovered the missing link from your canvas. So just, I would just re-download that from your canvas and swap that image out there.
Invisible. Okay, thank you.
Let's see. So that was your link page. So what I was mentioning here, we just need to hit enter right here. That's all.
Will that make it be the right line? Can you make any again? Can you?
What's that?
Can you make it narrow again?
What do you mean? Oh, oh, like the view of it. Got you.
Yeah, does that give it the same, it still looks like. Yeah.
Same way. So that's, that's the, the paragraph settings right here. So if we select it, and you click this little more paragraph, let's see what the other ones are.
See, that's what I did, and I just couldn't, it didn't wanna, I felt like I made them all the same.
Yeah.
But it's not showing.
Let's, just play around with it, refresh it. There you go. I thought it's one and a half.
Thank you. Okay, so I just. It's parent.
Yeah, definitely swap this out, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for sharing.
All right. Well, I appreciate your time, and I'm sure I'll have more questions. Greg, you're so awesome to respond to me. I just thank you so much for your constant, quick response. You guys rock. All of you. Colin too, all of you.
Yes. Colin does rock. He's got a guitar right there. Awesome. Thank you so much again, Christie. And thank you all for being here and sticking around. There were a couple of questions. Nope, I think we're good. Joy, definitely, I know we're, we're done one time today, but if you want to go over to get oiling.com/websitereview, you can sign up for a future review. Also, you know, days like this, sometimes the scheduled reviews don't pan out. So be sure to show up. You're always gonna learn something, and just let us know at the open of the call. If you're available to have your site reviewed, and you want to have us take a look, and we're always happy to fit you in if we can make the time. So, thank you. Here we go. I applaud the service from Julie and Colin when I need help. Oh, hey, guys. Cool. Alright, so I don't know, anybody else have anything to add here today? I'm, I'm happy with like the reviews we were able to fit in. That was really cool. Well, let me see. That's it. Yeah, no more questions. We'll be back here same time next week. You guys, make sure that you are signed up to get the aroma sharing updates that you can. to get the aroma sharing updates that you can run, not walk over to our booth. So we can give you virtual high fives and hugs. And you can see all of the fun stuff that we're giving away during aroma sharing. Bring your team with you. Use that happy little link next week and, uh, get some half off your months in the future for your account as well. Alright, thanks, guys, for being here. Thank you to this amazing team. We love you, guys, and we'll see you next week.